I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, welcome to the South River Board of Education regular meeting of Monday, August 19th, 2024. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Laws of 1975 of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On January 17th, 2024, the notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. On January 17th, 2024, the notice was faxed mailed to the following newspapers, Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger. On January 17th, 2024, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Mr. Rosa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Beza.
Here.
Mr. Budson.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Mrs. Bush has been excused.
Mrs. Byrne.
Here.
Mrs. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Young Yao.
Here.
Mrs. Urbannick.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Starting with the meeting, we're going to open it by going to our Board Secretary for the minutes and our use of facilities. Mr. Rosa.
So, we have the pre-meeting minutes, July 22nd, and our regular meeting minutes for July 25th.
Okay, Board members, if you've gotten a chance to read the minutes, what is your pleasure on the minutes?
Move the reading of the minutes.
Is the motion by Vice President Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Byrne. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is use of facilities.
So, for our use of facilities, we have number 1597, South River Parks and Recreation Department, number 1598, High School FBLA, number 1599, High School Class of 2026, number 1600 through 1605 is the Primary School PTA.
Thank you. If there aren't any questions on any of these use of facilities?
I have a comment on 1600.
Okay.
I intended last year's, it was the inaugural one, it was very well received, the food was delicious, the place was packed, the entertainment was great, I highly recommend, people coming out and enjoying a night. I mean, it was definitely well-run, the Hispanic community loved the fact of how many people who showed up, the dancers, the singers, the mariachi bands, you name it, they had it, and it was a good time had by all, and I look forward to it again this year. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other Board members? What is your pleasure on the use of facilities?
Move the use of facilities in accordance with Board policies.
Motion by Vice President Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sylvia Zercher.
Thank you, Mrs. Urbannick. My report really today focuses on encouraging parents to make sure that they check out all of the information that we have going out from each of our schools, also posted on our media pages. There are a lot of events prior to school opening, which include our orientations, our sixth-grade locker boot camp, so please make sure that you are checking out all of the information that we're sending out through eRAM, as well as those media sources, so that you know when these events are taking place. The first one we have coming up is just this Wednesday, and that's for our primary school, for our orientations there, so please be sure to come out for those. I want to talk about our 21st Century Grant. We are proud recipients of this grant for the second year in a row. Last year's allocation for the district was $550,000. For this year, 2425, we have a $600,000 grant being awarded, so we can continue to run our 21st Century programs. Through those programs, we provide academic support, we provide enrichment, we provide activities after school and also during the summer, so we really encourage you to look at our website under the 21st Century tab for more information as registration information for that program comes out. But we're really excited to be able to continue the program, and even more excited that we have this additional funding being allocated for the upcoming school year. Our parent portal opened up today. We encourage parents to please go into that parent portal, it's going to give you information about your child's schedule, but in order to be able to access your child's schedule and teacher assignment, you will need to go through and check off all of the forms, the beginning-of-year forms and consent. You will not be able to access the schedule until you take the time to do that, so please take a few minutes, go through all of those forms, they are really important, you do need your consent on those items, and then you can access that schedule, and if you have any questions about the schedule or the teacher assignments, please contact the building administration on those. District goals are included in this board agenda, and the board will be approving goals for the 2425 school year tonight. Those goals are based on success and achievement in the following areas: instruction and learning, physical, social, and emotional health, human resources, and safety and security. And if you look under the Superintendent of Schools in our agenda, those district goals are listed, and once they are board-approved, they say draft for tonight, but once they are approved by this board, they will be posted also on our district website. One of the things that we are excited to pursue through our district goal is to really formalize our multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS, we refer to, we really want to have a plan in the district to support the academic needs of our students, and we have a lot of resources, a lot of programs, but the MTSS model will bring all of that together in one formalized way that our teachers, our parents, everybody can understand, so that is in Goal One, under our instruction and learning. But please take a moment to review those goals, and like I said, they will be posted on our district website. And the rest of my superintendent's report tonight is being dedicated to two presentations. The first presentation is going to be our school district's NJGPA and AP assessment data that will be presented by Matt Crouch, and the second presentation is our ELL access reports, which will be presented by our ESL supervisor, Gabriella Cologne. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Crouch, and he can get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Zercher. Thank you, Board, for your time. Give me one moment while I put this up for you. As Dr. Zercher said, I'm going to be reviewing the NJGPA and the AP data for the 2024 school year.
What does NJGPA, AP say?
I'm going to cover that in just one moment, sir. So, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which is the NJGPA, is a statute that requires proficiency, the test proficiency, to be administered to all 11th-grade students. This is a comprehensive examination in both Language Arts and Mathematics, given to all 11th-grade students for the purpose of meeting state of graduation assessments and requirements. The examination is computer-based and addresses skills that are based on content taught in classes and based on the New Jersey students' learning standards. The Language Arts component is aligned to the 10th grade, and the Mathematics component is aligned to both the Algebra and the Geometry standards. Following the assessment, students are characterized as either graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. On May 3rd, 2023, the Board of Ed, the State Board of Ed, adopted a proficiency-level cut score for the ELA and the math portion of the NJGPA, as well as the menu of alternative assessments aligned to those cut scores. Students who do not meet the minimum required score of each component will have the ability to retake both the math and the ELA portion of the NJGPA, and if they do not meet that, we can use substitute competency tests, such as the PSAT, et cetera, and/or complete a portfolio appeal. This year, we had our results in Mathematics, we found that we were 20% not passing with a 72% passing, and in Mathematics, we had a 62% not passing and a 38% passing. For a more comprehensive look at this, I have broken things down in both the ELA and the Mathematics portion to be able to show how this works upon each individual demographic Also, we're looking at AP. AP, for your information, sir, is the Advanced Placement Testing, which is run by the College Board. It is college standards that students are meant to meet inside of the high school curriculum. We've seen really good numbers in some of our classes and growth in many new classes that we're offering. For example, last year, we had 26 students who proactively took pre-calculus, and we had an overall score of 2.85, that's the average, the global version of, the global measurement of that would be 3.41. U.S. History, we had 11 students take that, our average on that was a 4.18, the global, or the College Board, which is a global measurement now, was a 3.23. We also had Spanish language, which is another one of those new classes that we just brought in, and we really are shining with a 4.25 compared to the 3.25. All of this will be posted online for the review of the Board and the public later. So what can we take away from this? The NJGPA is used as a graduation testing requirement. Feedback from the test indicates areas that the district should target in the future. The NJGPA is a comprehensive test given to high school juniors that encompasses three years of content and multiple standards. Moving forward towards improvement, how will we do this? We will continue to review the data three times a year at the high school, following the administration of benchmark assessments in ELA and math to the high school and all four core subjects as well, as some centers are assessed in both the NJGPA across those different disciplines. Data will be reviewed by teacher leaders as well as building administrators. The district is offering tutoring to all students and, well, during, through the 21st Century program that Dr. Zercher had just a moment ago spoken about, and this is not including, this includes English and Language Arts as well as Mathematics, but it is not limited to that, there will be remediation available in all of those. The district continues to grow sports and Mathematics and Literacy for English-language learners through the initiation of a brand-new newcomer program that has been started. We have access testing, which is going to be administered at regular intervals to ensure that students meet all the pathways of graduation, and for those who are still struggling with that, we have the academic support instruction in place to ensure that all students pass the portfolio in English and Language Arts and Mathematics. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch.
Thank you. And I do want to point out that some of the concerns that educators have been communicating to the Department of Education is just in general the makeup of the NJGPA assessment. So, for example, one of the slides that Matt showed shows that only 82% of the state actually passed that assessment in ELA, and only 55% of students in the state passed the math. So that speaks to the assessment and a potential issue with the assessment, when you're looking at half of the state, half of the children of that age in the entire state not passing, right? So, that is a communication that we have had, along with other districts, with the Department of Education as well.
Thank you.
All right, our next report is on our access results, and that's presented by our ESL supervisor, Gabriella Cologne.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me today. So, in exploring our 2024 access scores, I have a little bit of context here for you guys. There are some growing trends in our population of multilingual learners, so you can see in 2022 how many students we have in every building and our total 2023, 2024. This really gives a good background in terms of unpacking and understanding the access scores, as a lot of the new, the added population that we have are newcomer students. We occasionally get transfers from neighboring districts, but the bulk of this growth are newcomer students who've just arrived from their countries, and also an increase in a SCIF population, which are your students with interrupted or formal, interrupted formal education. This is also just including the GenEd WIDA access scores, alternate access scores won't be available until the fall. This also provides some context in terms of understanding WIDA access scores. The test goes from 1 to 6, students are scored from 1 to 6. Students must achieve a 4.5 overall to be eligible for exit from the program. They are assessed in four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. On average, it takes our students about three to five years to become proficient and exit the program. This is the overall proficiency of our primary school and elementary school. The red percentages are the 2023 access scores, the black are this year's, this past year's 2024 access scores. You can unpack things a lot of different ways when you look at this data. One of the things I like to look at is the K1, 2, 3, 4. So you'll see when you have students in entering Level 1, that number continues to go down each grade level, which is telling us that our students are making growth with every grade level that they go up. Typically around Grade 4 is when we'll see a bulk of our exits, because we know it takes about four, four years for our kids to exit. This is our data for the middle school and high school. Similar, you can unpack this in looking at grade levels, we can also take a look at students who are, what is that percentage of students coming from entering 1, and then that next year, we want to see the 1 getting smaller and more students testing into Level 2 emerging, Level 3 developing, or Level 4 expanding. When we look at where our students have the most need, where their lowest domain scores are, this is what we found in each grade level cluster. In kindergarten, our students needed to improve most in reading and writing, that's where their scores were the lowest. To address this, we have a new bilingual kindergarten program starting this year. We also have planned family literacy events, because we know that students who develop a strong foundation in their L1, in their first language, are more likely to carry that over into English, as well as additional newcomer program materials and platforms. In grades 1 through 3, our neediest domains were speaking and writing. We have similar programs in place, but we're going to tailor all of these programs to really target those key domains for these specific grade level clusters. Grade 4, speaking and reading, grade 6, reading alone, and in grade 9 through 12, speaking. We have a high school newcomer bilingual program set to start this fall, really excited about it, I think it's going to help students in a small cohort group to become a little bit more comfortable in developing that speaking. Overall, as a district program, our goals are to develop literacy and language production. You can see that listening wasn't on any of these domain needs, so that is an area where our students are really doing very well, is that listening component. Now you'll see that some of our access score data shows that we don't have a lot of kids exiting on the access, but we do get a lot of students who exit mid-year model. So when our kids are very close to exiting on the access at the end of the year, if they hit that 4.4, 4.3, we'll test them on the model. Usually it's one-on-one, paper-based, and we have a lot of students experience success with that as well. So you can see from 21 to 22, 23, 24, our numbers of total exiting students are going up, but our overall population is also going up as well. That is it for me. WIDA is the Wisconsin, it stands for our program, Wisconsin, I think it's international, it's the consortium of testing.
Just to name the other.
Yeah, yeah, but it's really the access, the assessment that they're being tested on. Thank you.
Okay. And so, on my report today, we had the regular report, the two presentations, as well as the district goals, and so concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The two presentations and the district goals are going to be moved under consent, so at this time, we are going to take a motion for the superintendent's report.
Move the superintendent's report as read.
Motion by Vice President Nielsen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young Yao. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Mr. Rosa, would you call the roll?
Mr. Beza.
Yes.
Mr. Budson.
Yes.
Mrs. Byrne.
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Young Yao.
Yes.
Mrs. Urbannick.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the Board is going to open its meeting to the public, and this is so the public may address agenda items only. If you do come up to speak to any of the items that are on the agenda, please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a 10-minute time limit. So this is on first call. And on second call? Oh, sorry, okay. And on third call. So this will conclude the public portion for the agenda items. There will be another public portion later on in the meeting for the public to address any concerns they have for the Board of Education. Before we move into the consent resolution, we are going to go to our resolution for Robin Steinhausen for her retirement.
Yes, thank you. So, Robin works at the Board Office, she works in our Human Resources Department, she is an invaluable member of our office, and we are sad to see her, see her go for retirement, but really happy for her, and I'd like to read her resolution out loud. Whereas Robin Steinhausen served the students of the South River School District from 2013 to 2024, and whereas Robin Steinhausen served as part-time NCLB ESCEA Federal Programs Clerk and Secretary, Superintendent's Office, and distinguished herself by her enthusiastic devotion to her profession by accepting all responsibilities assigned to her, and whereas Robin Steinhausen's service to the school district was marked by her honesty, integrity, and commitment, now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be adopted, spread upon the minutes of the August 19, 2024 public meeting, and that a copy of same be presented to Robin Steinhausen. Johnny Rosa, Board Secretary, Cynthia Urbannick, President.
Thank you. Would someone like to move that?
Nielsen, motion.
Moved by Vice President Nielsen, another second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to our committee reports, and then we'll come back for the consent resolution. So our first committee report is Athletics and Extracurricula. Mr. Budson.
Here's one item, it's a loan agreement that Cornelius Lowhouse, Milligan County Museum, where they want some of our football and the sports trophies and other stuff to exhibit. So we're letting them loan it, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds, Vice President Nielsen.
There are two items on Buildings and Grounds. If I can figure out what the heck I'm doing. There's 7.1, approved toilet room facilities, preschool and kindergarten, 2024, 2025 school year. 7.2, approved, submit initial application for multiple temporary instructional spaces, primary school, 2024, 2025 school year. And as everybody saw when they came in tonight, the hallways have new equipment that our guys will be putting up, they're getting ready in the coming weeks to open up in September, and they're doing a great job, and please let them know to keep up the good work and that we're proud of them. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Lau, Finance.
Thank you so much. We have 19 items this evening. 8.1, approved, submit, accept the Elementary and Secondary Education Act application for fiscal year 2025. 8.2, approved contract MRDA Inc. for 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant evaluator services for the 2425 school year. 8.3, approved contract language line services for translation services for the upcoming school year. 8.4, approved contract Delta T Group for various special education services. 8.5, approved addendum ESS Northeast Substitute Preschool Paraprofessional Services. 8.6, approved contract Trinity Wellness Emporium Yoga Classes. 8.7, approved contract Imagine Learning Inc. High School Credit Recovery. 8.8, approved contract Imagine Learning Inc. Physics Course. 8.9, approved Early Learning Center Project Change Order Number 02. 8.10, approved the Mascot Inc., the Mascot Company Inc. Mascot Costume for the 2425 school year. 8.11, 12 and 13 are our requisitions for debt services, tax requisitions, and li-dam transfers. And then recently this evening, earlier in the day, we received 8.14 addition contract Advanced Assessment Sinks, which is DBA Linkit for student progress tracking services. 8.15 addition approved contract Right at School LLC, the before and after-school care service provider. 8.16 addition approved contract Curriculum Associates, which is our iReady learning program services provider. 8.17 addition approved contract College of New Jersey ESL Bilingual Endorsement Program. 8.18 addition approved contract Shaw's Complete Security. And 8.19 addition approved contract Magic Touch Construction Company. And that is all I have this evening for Finance.
Thank you. If there are no questions from any of the Board members, would you please continue with the Instruction Report?
Under Instruction, we have nine items. 9.1, approved professional development and travel expenses. 9.2, approved the 2425 nursing plan and accident emergency protocols. 9.3 is approve a field trip. 9.4, out-of-district placements that require approval. 9.5, approved the 2425 comprehensive substance abuse program. 9.6, approve out-of-district preschool students for tuition. 9.7, it's adopting the 2425 revised school calendar that was communicated at last month's meeting since then. 9.8 is addition approved disposal of broken chairs, and 9.9 is addition approved disposal of tables. I'd like to add that the Curriculum Committee went through an extensive amount of guides under Dr. T, that because this NJDOE required that ELA and math standards be updated on our curriculum guide, so he had mentioned it was like over 100 guides, and recently, DOE recognized that Language Arts and Math was a big job for districts to do for the same deadline, so they actually extended the math ones for next September, which is fine for other districts that were in a crunch, but he had it organized so well that we were already on pace, and we, he already has all the math ones done. So that's something that is beneficial to us as a district, because we'll have certain key pieces of that curriculum piece from him in place before next September 25.
Good.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Yes, I did see all those guides that the committee had to review, and you did a remarkable job. Glad I'm not on that committee. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Negotiations, and we have nothing to report under Negotiations at this time. Our next item is Committee Report from Policy and Legislation.
We just have one item, 11.1, approved, first reading, revised policy number 4112.8/4212.8, NEPA. Madam President.
Thank you. Under Human Resources, Mr. Beza.
Thank you, Madam President. 34 items on the agenda. Item 12.1.
Item 12.1, approve resignation Amanda Cobb, high school science teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.2, approve resignation Jordan Fish, primary elementary school music teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.3, approve anti-bullying staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.4, approve due process hearing staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.5, approve appoint additional coaches, 24-25 school year. Item 12.6, discuss approve revised Cecilia Olivera, primary school special education teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.7, approve appoint revise Alexandra Giuffrida, primary school bilingual teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.8, approve appoint Stephanie Carvalho, elementary school teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.9, approve appoint Joshua Heller, middle school music teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.10, approve appoint Carly Fama, high school fashion art teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.11, approve appoint Mary Ann Costilli, elementary primary school music teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.12, approve appoint Charlene Belak, part-time speech language pathologist, leave replacement, 24-25 school year. Item 12.13, approve appoint Kanadeke Leannidge, high school chemistry teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.14, approve revise summer program staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.15, approve appoint revise Laura Ramos, primary school bilingual teacher, 24-25 school year. Item 12.16, approve 21st Century Community Learning Center Program Staff, 23-24 school year. Item 12.17, approve additional co-curricular staff, high school, 24-25 school year. Item 12.18, approve payment for seventh-period class coverage, high school, 24-25 school year. Item 12.19, approve hall duty aide, middle school, 24-25 school year. Item 12.20, approve transfers of staff members, 24-25 school year. Item 12.21, approve alternate program staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.22, approve appoint mentors, 24-25 school year. Item 12.23, approve high school lunch club staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.24, approve appoint Kim Lee Soto, Early Learning Center Secretary, 24-25 school year. Item 12.25, approve appoint additional transition and support coordinator, 24-25 school year. Item 12.26, approve 21st Century Community Learning Center Program Staff, 24-25 school year. Item 12.27, approve additional middle school co-curricular advisor, 24-25 school year. Item 12.28, approve disability sick extension, Dr. Joseph Travasano, Assistant Superintendent, 24-25 school year. Item 12.29, approve contract Eugene Mosley, Inter-Assistant Superintendent, 24-25 school year. Item 12.30, addition approved disability sick maternity family leave, Carissa Disney, Primary School Early Learning Center Assistant Principal, 24-25 school year. Item 12.31, approve, I'm sorry, addition approve appoint Andrea O'Brien, Coordinator of Cafeteria Playground Aides, 24-25 school year. Item 12.32, addition appoint additional lunch aid, 24-25 school year. Item 12.33, addition approve appoint Early Learning Center Classroom Staging Staff, 24-25 school year. And item 12.34, addition approve appoint Lisa Cashin, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, 24-25 school year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on any of those items? Okay, our Safety and Risk Management Committee, Ms. Sadowski?
Thank you. There are two items on tonight's agenda. Item 13.1, addition approve full transportation routes Somerset County Educational Services Commission for the 24-25 school year. Item 13.2, addition approve parent transportation contracts for the 24-25 school year. So I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to go back to the consent resolution. Seeing no questions or comments, could we have a... Yes, yeah, could we hear from our Board Secretary what items will be on that consent resolution?
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolution of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the said Board of Education in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. And those are, the Superintendent of Schools, 3.2 to 3.4. There are athletics, 6.1. The Buildings and Grounds, 7.1 through 7.2. And the Finance, 8.1 through 8.19. And the Instruction, 9.1 through 9.9. And the Policy and Legislation, 11.1. Under Human Resources, 12.1 through 12.34. And there's Safety and Risk Management, 13.1 and 13.2.
Thank you. Could we have a motion on that?
Nielsen?
We have a motion by Vice President Nielsen on the consent resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lell. Are there any questions? Are there any items that need to be read separate? Or any abstentions on any of the items? Seeing none, Mr. Rosa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bazak?
Yes.
Mr. Budson?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrne?
Yes.
Mrs. Lell?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Young-Yao?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbani?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ms. Young-Yao now and ask if there is anything under our school community relations at this time.
No, there's not. Not for this evening.
Okay, I'm sure certainly there will be as soon as school starts with all the press releases. Our next committee report, let's hear from our school board, Borough Council Liaison, Vice President Nielsen.
I have, Mr. Fazimi is in the audience again tonight. Nice to see you again, Hank. Thank you for coming. I do know that the fireworks and the luau that were held up on our property was a success from what I'm hearing on social media. I was out of the state when it took place. I like the fact that the borough and the district can keep that open and utilize our facilities to help you guys get along. So we'll see you next year. Okay, Hank? That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Our PTA Liaison, Mrs. Sadowski?
Thank you. So planning for primary school, the Early Learning Center and the primary school PTAs are going to be combined. They will fall under one organization with vice president positions in each school. Planning for the upcoming school year is underway. There are numerous use of facilities on the agenda. Primary PTA is selling pre-K Early Learning Center t-shirts. They have an upcoming spiritware sale. And the membership portal is open. The links for all the fundraisers and memberships are available on Facebook as well as in the eRAM. For elementary school, elementary school PTA attended the end-of-summer festival Friday night. They were selling RAM socks, crop charms, t-shirts. They actually have back-to-school t-shirts. Their membership portal is also open. And links for all the fundraisers and memberships are available again on Facebook and in the eRAM. And I would just like to encourage all parents and guardians to get involved in their child's PTAs. Most events are only possible with the help and support of families, parents, and communities. So I urge everybody to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. South River Public Library Liaison, Mr. Budson?
Mondays, they continue into yoga classes at 4:00 p.m. Tomorrow is Adult Craft Night at 6:00 p.m. Thursday at 6:30 is a mindful breathing and meditation class. Tuesdays is the chess club at 4:00 p.m. September 19 is a nonfiction book club. And September 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th, you're having a Halloween costume drop-off. Anyone have old, unused Halloween costumes? The library would like to have them. Hand them out. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That's very good. The Student Board Representative will be joining us next month?
September, correct.
Okay. Is there any old or new business to come before the board?
I have something that I probably should have done in our Mr. Budson's sports. I was at the scrimmage today. And the Spotswood game, right now, it looks like it's going to be held at East Brunswick High School because their turf field, there's that word. Is not ready. And they don't think it'll be ready by the time the second week of football season comes around. So we'll keep the general public up to date on that. If it is moved over to East Brunswick, we'll make sure it's out in the eRAM and social media and all that good stuff. Okay? That's all I have on that one.
All right, thank you. Under old and new business, I'd just like to call attention. Many times during this meeting, reference was made to our website. And not because I've been up here for a while and I'm a little biased. But if anybody gets the opportunity to visit our website, just about any question that you have regarding what's going on at the school, what's happening in the classroom, on the campus, with your child, can be found on our website. I know Dr. Zercher, you and our technology group dedicated a lot of time to making that site extremely interactive and full of all of the facts that you need to know about what is going on up here. In addition, there is a translation button. I believe it's at the top right corner. And is it 12 languages? Or some really big number of languages that our web page can be translated into. And if you can't find it there, then of course, you're always welcome to call the school. But I'd just like to promote that. And it's going to become even more important as we start the new school year with everything that has gone on here during the summer. So please visit our website. I think you'll be very, very pleasantly surprised. And I think all the board members will agree with me.
Yep.
In that.
There is also an app available for your phone. If you have a difficult time accessing the website through a device, you can always access it through your phone. There is an app that has the same exact content. And the symbol is our interlocking SR. So all the content on our website, for example, tonight's presentations, will be posted. And the news on our websites can also be found on the app.
Thank you.
Also, under new business, I just wanted to mention our Early Learning Center remains on schedule. You know, barring any unprecedented or unexpected issues, we are looking to open for the start of school. And we are continuing on schedule.
Very good.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have a report from our attorney?
We will discuss things in executive session, but no report for right now.
Thank you. Ms. Lell, our payment of bills, please.
I lost the page. Hold on, there we go. I've got it. Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented have been certified by the School Business Administrator Board Secretary be paid as listed. And we have the bill list and then additions listed. And I so move.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Lell. We have a second by Vice President Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, the board is now going to open up the meeting to the reception of visitors. And this is the time where the public may address any concern or comment that they have for the board. As you know from the previous session, please state your name and address when you come to the microphone. And please keep your comments to a 10-minute time limit on first call.
I just passed around a graph in the National Center for Education Statistics. The National Center for Education Statistics is a federal agency that collects statistics on schools. And I happen to have been speaking to, you know, for the last year, I've been passing out various statistics, graphs, data, and studies about school shootings. And I happened to be speaking to a resident of the town who mentioned that, about school shootings. And she mentioned that she had a friend who's a teacher. And the teacher was mentioning that currently in schools, there are so many kids carrying guns that they keep finding, even elementary school kids, it's just terrible. And I realized that's something I hadn't looked into. So I went online to see if I can find out any information about our kids carrying more guns these days to school. And there was really very little information on it. But I did find this graph from, let's see, I think I gave you my copy. I did find this graph from the National Center for Education Statistics. And you can read on the top along with me if you wish what they did. It shows the percentage of students, grade 9 through 12, who reported, this is self-reporting, who reported carrying a weapon on school property at least one day during the previous 30 days. And they didn't define a weapon. That's up to the student. I mean, is it a knife? Is it a gun? Is it a stick? It could be any weapon. And interestingly enough, what it shows is a general downward trend. About half from 2011 to 2021, self-reporting. Is this graph valid? Does it mean anything? I can't say. Like I said, it's self-reporting. But it certainly doesn't show it went up, and it is fairly smooth. So it's interesting how people's feelings about things could be contradicted by real data. This particular teach, he wouldn't have had any real data. But any data that exists, which as I said, is very sparse, doesn't show more weapons in the schools. Like I said, how accurate is the data? I really can't say. But it's just another graph among the many that I've handed out. Shows half. Okay, I have a few questions and a few things I want to talk about. Question to you. How were the duties of the Director of Security carried out before you hired a full-time director? Somebody must have done that. Coordinated somehow with the police or did something like that?
So we added our security director when there was a new mandate from the state that we have threat assessment teams and someone to overlook and have oversight of those threat assessment teams. And that was in addition to the state mandates for school year 23-24. And so at that time, that's when we hired our school.
So you're saying the workload simply became too great for somebody to do part-time? Okay, is a Director of Security a sworn law enforcement officer?
He is.
The one you hired?
Retired. He's retired.
Retired police officer? Okay, I wasn't sure whether I should bring this up. This is something I'm going to talk about because it's somewhat argumentative. Before, I simply brought up data that I found. But it's a little more argumentative, but I'll do it anyway. When I presented data for multiple studies that showed the ineffectiveness of an armed security guard to prevent school shootings, that's ineffectiveness, of an armed security guard to prevent school shootings or reduce casualties if a school shooting begins, it was disingenuously mentioned that your armed guards also perform the duties of a counselor and mentor to the students. It appeared to me that this statement was made to justify their hiring. I use the term disingenuous because everyone knows that we hired armed guards for our schools to prevent our students of being shot. We did not hire them because we needed mentors. That's fairly clear. In fact, it's so clear why you hired the armed guards that it says that right here in your own flyer. It says armed police officers in all schools. It doesn't say armed mentors in all schools. So let's call a spade a spade. We hired these guards to keep our students safe. That's why we have armed guards. They might also be used as mentors or counselors, but that's not really why they're there. If you really needed mentors or counselors, you can hire them. You could use the school nurse as a counselor or mentor. You could use one of the secretaries. Any adult in the school could be an informal mentor. She has the right personality.
I just want to make a clarification and a correction. Definitely not counselors. Counselors are licensed as such. Our officers are not licensed as such.
Informal mentors.
And we would never, we would never expect our officers to conduct counseling.
Okay, good, good. Well, you agree upon it. There's no reason to do anything else. Okay, next, I'd like to, what? Okay, next, I'd like to, what?
And mentors, like you stated, any one of our staff members.
Yes, could be a mentor.
Can serve as mentors, including our officers.
Of course, anyone can. There's nothing special about them carrying a gun or anything to be a mentor. They carry a gun to protect our students from being shot. I mean, they're not going to use the gun to break up a fight between two students, not going to put a gun and put it to the head of one of the students and say, if you don't stop fighting, I'm going to blow your brains out. I mean, the gun is just used there in case there's a shooting. I can see no other reason for the gun. Okay, so we agree. Okay, since I presented so much data and this talk has gone on for a year, I'd like to summarize what I presented in previous talks briefly. I presented three statistical studies comparing similar schools without armed guards, also, and with armed guards. Also, the National Threat Assessment Center report on targeted school violence, the National Police Foundation study of averted school violent incidences, and the New Jersey School Security Task Force 2015. The, the three statistical studies were done by academics. These studies either, these studies either found armed security guards to be ineffective when it comes to school shootings or did not specifically recommend them, although they made other safety recommendations. I couldn't find any, any independent organization that studied school shootings that said, thou shall have armed guards. There are ones that said you can have them if you want, that it doesn't really matter, and they're very expensive. That's your most expensive security thing is armed guards. To summarize further, I mentioned that the statement, but it can happen, because whenever I tell people how rare a school shooting is, they always tell me, but it can happen. So to summarize further, I mentioned that the statement, but it can happen, should never by itself be used to justify a course of action. After all, anything that does not violate the laws of nature can happen. You could use the statement, but it can happen, to justify never going on an airplane, they could crash, anything, never going in a car. To make a rational decision, one must look at the probability of the event happening, the consequences of it happening, the cost of preventing it, the effectiveness of your mitigation technique. Those are four things you have to look at. I discussed this extensively previously. I discussed this and presented data and studies to show that using armed guards to mitigate school shootings failed by all four measures. The probability of the event happening, a rampage shooting, about once every 100,000 years is about, there's probably less than one each year that occurs in the country and there's 100,000 schools. The consequences of it happening, once every 100,000 years or so, you have a few dead people. It's not the asteroid coming like wiped out the asteroid, the dinosaurs that wiped out civilization. Every 100,000 years, you've got a few more dead people, five. The cost of preventing it, if you could prevent every one using your mitigation techniques, it would cost hundreds of millions of dollars per life saved. Remember, schools are the safest place in the entire nation for students. The number of students shot in schools is 100 times lower than when they leave school. This whole year, only one student out of 50 million and 100,000 students was actually shot inside a school and another 12 were shot somewhere on campus. They were shot mostly in parking lots, drive-by shootings, ambush shootings, and shootings when kids were leaving school and coming in. Nothing your security guard would do anything about. So the cost of preventing it is enormous. And the effectiveness of the mitigation techniques, well, I discussed that already. All the studies show that the armed guards will not do anything. That schools that have armed guards or don't have armed guards have the same number of shootings. In fact, one of the statistical studies showed that when you have an armed guard and you actually have a shooting, for some bizarre reason, you have almost three times as many casualties. The people who did that study tried to explain, tried to give reasons why you might have more casualties with an armed guard. I didn't particularly buy it, I mean, they're just guessing. All we know is that's what the data shows. The fact that the data shows that you have a higher casualty rate with armed guards doesn't prove that the armed guards caused the higher casualty rate. Correlation never proves cause and effect. We really don't know. There's another thing. I know, of course, that presenting a world full of data like I did or studies will never change the mind of someone who made a decision based on just, but it can happen. That's because they're right, it can happen, but anything can happen. You can't convince them they're wrong because they're right, it can happen, but you don't make a decision that way. If someone did not make a decision based upon data, then no amount of data will change their mind. So I really don't expect to change any of your minds. I doubt any of you looked extensively at studies and data and graphs at school shootings, realized that there were more school shootings, not more school shootings, but more deaths. I'm not sure about shootings, I only looked at deaths, deaths. That there were more school deaths in the 90s than now in the schools. They haven't been going up. And finally, I have a question for you. Why did you hire armed guards for all our schools, every single one of them? Somebody want to answer that?
Sure.
Because parents asked for it.
Because what?
Parents asked for it.
Yeah, so what I assumed.
So we can, we can easily answer that. We did so in consultation with South River Police Department. This was a joint decision between.
Then why didn't they fund it? Why didn't they fund it totally?
They, we, it is a shared service agreement. They do fund it. They do fund 50% of our armed.
Why didn't they fund it completely? They're the people responsible to keep us safe if there's a shooting. Why didn't they always put police officers in schools?
That's a question you'd have to ask SRPD.
Okay, now remember, remember, the number of, of students dying has been the same. I mean, going back to the 80s, you can see it, the graphs. Even peaked in the 90s. Police officers, police officers tend to put their people where they believe there's crime. That was where they'll do the most good. You were a police officer, right?
For years.
Yes, yes. And they didn't for years put them in schools. It was parents that pushed it. You gave me the answer, the parents pushed it. Come on, that's it.
I will repeat what I said, which this was a joint decision with South River Police Department, which is why it is a joint expenditure as well. As to why they didn't fully fund it, that's a question for SRPD.
How long?
But I also suggest, I would recommend to you that if you really want information as to how armed guards can prevent crime, can prevent deaths.
In schools.
I would recommend that you do speak to South River Police Department because they are the experts in terms of security.
And they have done this already. They have prevented shootings in our schools. So they have data on this information. No, they don't. They have no data on it.
Again, that's a question for them, but that's another venue that you can pursue to get the information that you would like.
I know, I could, I could, I could, I may. Now, I'm sure you coordinate with the South River Police if you can say not to for school safety.
Mr. Sternberg, I'm afraid your time has run.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the Board of Education at this time?
Hello, Richard Byrne, 11 Bisset Place. Point out that the previous speaker did not announce his name and address. And I'll just leave it at that.
Should I announce it? Do you want to announce it? I've done it many times, I've announced it, so I didn't think about it. They kind of know who I am.
Do we have minutes from last month's meeting where we could get?
Yes.
I'll announce it. My name is Norman Scheinberg. I live at 24 New Street in South River.
Thank you. For the record. Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to speak on first call? Second call? Third call? The public portion is closed and at this time, the board is going to go into executive session. Be it resolved that pursuant to section seven and eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, the following subjects to be discussed at a session of the Board of Education close to the public, and that is personnel.
And attorney-client privilege.
And attorney-client privilege. It is presently anticipated that the items to be discussed in closed session can be disclosed to the public when resolved. Do I hear a motion?
Nielsen.